Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters present a forum featuring the 2012 candidates for Wake County Board of Commissioners. The candidates for Wake County Commissioner District Four are Republican Dale Cook and Democrat Caroline Sullivan. District Five candidate James West, a Democrat, is running for reelection without opposition. In District Six, Democratic incumbent Betty Lou Ward faces Republican challenger Paul Fitz. Although the Wake County Board of Commissioners is divided into districts, candidates are elected on a county-wide basis. Commissioners serve four-year terms. And now to the 2012 Wake County Commissioners Candidate Forum moderated by Don Myle, a member of the Board of Directors for Wake Up Wake County.
And then we will begin with the questions that we have for the candidates tonight. And we will start with Ms. Sullivan for the very first question. State school funding has been reduced significantly and is likely to be cut more next year. What should the county commissioners do to help the schools serve more students, maintain programs, and continue commitment to improving the quality of instructions? How do you propose providing the revenue needed to support the additional 3,000 to 4,000 students added annually?
Well, as I said, I have two kids in the schools. If I'm elected, I'll be the only commissioner with kids currently in the schools. And let me tell you, the numbers are actually... the capacity issues are becoming very, very evident. The difference between my son's fifth grade class two years ago and then my daughter's fifth grade class, it went from 21 to 27 kids. This year, my daughter, in the sixth grade, she's got 35 kids in her math class. We are at the capacity numbers are already influencing the education of the kids. They don't have books because there are too many kids and there are not enough books. They don't have enough money to do labs. Biology classes don't have any money for labs. So, we already are at a breaking point. The teachers in Wake County are fantastic and they've been... oh my goodness. And they've been doing more with less for many, many years. I think we need to look for efficiencies, but we are as lean and as mean as we can be right now. So, oh my goodness.
Go ahead and finish your statement.
I think we need to offer capacity issues. We do need to start discussing a bond with the school board and figure out ways to build the schools that we need. There are 20,000 extra kids and we don't have places to put them.
Thank you.
The Wake County school system has a larger budget than does the county commissioners. Their budget is about 1.3 billion. The county budget's close to a billion. So, some of the money that Wake County goes to the public school system, but not most of the money. Most of their money comes from the state. Recently, they've had an injection of money from the federal government during this economic recession. And also during this economic recession, the Wake County has been able to keep up with their payments or their contribution to the school system. As a matter of fact, in this last budget session, they increased that funding as well. So, as far as county commissioners are concerned, as far as the county's concerned, I think that as the base of the county continues to grow, there will be more revenue that comes into the county. As more revenue comes into the county, they'll still be able to continue to keep up with the funding for the Wake County public school system.
A question like that requires more than a minute and a half. But we had a process in place to look at this school bond. It was supposed to... the first meeting was supposed to be October the 12th, but my understanding that that has been called off. And our plan was to work collectively with the school board to look at all the factors and the needs, the projection growth and et cetera. Over the past three years of economic downturn, we did allocate right at $5 million to the school system. It was definitely not enough when everything else pretty much remained flat. And actually, the bottom line here is if we're going to invest strategically in our schools and they are the foundation and they are the things that bring in economic development and job opportunities to all of us, we're going to have to bite the bullet. And I don't know of any way that we're going to be able to float this bond and get the money and appropriation without looking at some type of tax increase.
Okay. We were debating who was going next. As a Wake County Commissioner for several years, this has been an issue with the students that we have. We have added a tremendous number of students in the last few years. We haven't properly funded the school system and quite honestly, they haven't asked for it, but I think they will this year. I certainly hope they will because I think that the public needs to be aware that these students are there. They need the books. They need the teachers. So, you don't have 36 students in a class, as Caroline mentioned. But I also think that it's really important that we all get out and support the schools, that we support even if it's a tax increase, a couple of pennies to go to the schools. That's a good investment in the future. I'm not recommending that we raise taxes, but I am recommending that we look really hard. And as James pointed out, we are supposed to meet with the school board, but you say the meeting's been canceled. Oh, wow. Anyhow, next up.
I guess being on the county commissioners doesn't always help, does it? They don't tell you. There's a lot of outside-the-box ideas that I come up with every now and then and try to look at. Number one, just raising taxes isn't always the answer. I said this in the meeting we had last week. There's something that we can do and we could look at real estate speculation as far as selling Wake County properties that we're not currently using. One Wake County property that we're not currently using is 3,600 Wake Forest Road, which was the former house of the school board. It's a property that's sitting vacant and I grant you it is for sale right now, but we want to make sure that we do the right thing with it to put the money back into the system. We missed an opportunity back in 1988 when we sold the Wake Forest Middle School property, which was 17 acres. We sold it to a nonprofit organization for only $325,000. That was a terrible mistake on our part. Not only job recruitment would help, bringing businesses in here that would bring more revenue, that would help bolster the schools, but again, if we could look at different ways of using what we have currently, I think that would help the children tremendously.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Mr. Cook. As part of a Triangle Regional Transit Plan, Durham County voters approved a one-half-cent sales tax referendum for doubling bus service, creating commuter rail between Durham and Wake Counties and light rail. Orange County Commissioners have decided to put this transit referendum on the ballot this November. Do we need better transit? Would you support placing a half-cent sales tax transit funding referendum on the ballot in 2013?
Well, let's start with understanding what transportation is in America. Transportation in America is primarily the automobile, the private automobile, and most of the investment in transportation in this country is in the infrastructure for the private automobile and roads and bridges, et cetera. There are alternative transit systems, public transit systems that are throughout the United States of America in a lot of cities. A lot of them are based upon... most cities have bus service and operates fairly well in most cities. A lot of other cities are installing light rail systems and commuter train systems. All of those systems that I've studied have not proven to be economically viable in that they never raised enough revenue through fares to support themselves. And they're really not something that's going to last forever. I think the taxpayers need to know that, is that after 30 or 35 years, that full investment you made in a light rail system or a train system has to be re-spent again.
Well, the answer is on... would I support a half-cent sales tax for a $1 billion boondoggle for a light rail system? No.
Also, please refrain by asking questions until the end.
Yes, with the right due diligence, the study, which has not been done, and the county commissioners are responsible for that, and based on that data, I would certainly support a referendum for the voters to vote on and hopefully they would be informed. Couple of factors: competitiveness. If we're going to be competitive, we do need to have a mass transit system in some form. I think the key here is to get the right information to support the decision that we make. We need options. We need choices. We need transit-oriented communities. An opportunity to visit Ottawa, Canada, and I found out that they have a very successful mass transit program and it's certainly paying off. And our facts is basically based on sometimes what you want to do to support whatever your position is. So, I think yes, it's something that we need to be competitive in the future.
The answer is yes. I would support a half-cent sales tax to be able to move ahead with the transit that we do not have in Wake County. We have an increasing number of people and those of you that perhaps may drive out Interstate 40 to your work, good heavens to Betsy. I always hate it when I have to have an early morning meeting and go out 40 because I always know it's going to take me another 15 to 20 minutes because it's just going to be that way. But truly, we have not addressed what Orange and Durham County have done so well. They have put it to the vote of the people. The people in Orange and Durham County have said, yes, we do need transit. We need to move ahead and so must Wake County.
Currently, I wouldn't support the current proposal. I believe it's far too costly and it's not just a half-cent sales tax. It's also a $10 per license plate tax as well. Just some interesting things that you should know. Of the top 10 highest crime rate cities in the country, eight of those cities have light rail and of those cities, only one of those cities has a lower unemployment than our current area. There's kind of a pattern with what happens with rail and what happens with unemployment and what happens with the crime. You have to ask yourself sometimes, you know, what do I want to trade off? Do I want to have a light rail transit system or would I rather have the area that I have with lower unemployment, lower crime rate, and lower taxes? I think that the current proposal needs to be taken back to the drawing board. Anybody who's really serious about transit, in my opinion, will only look at a bus system currently and not a light rail system that's added into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question was... oh, I'm sorry, Caroline.
Regarding the transit plan, I think we need a structured approach. It needs to be one that we've studied. It needs to be one that is right for the community and it needs to be one that we can afford. But 92,000 people moved in to Wake County since the recession started. We're getting older and some of our older citizens can't drive. And we're also attracting a lot of young professionals who want to take public transit. I think when the 12 mayors of the municipalities in Wake County are encouraging the Board of Commissioners to at least open it up to a public hearing, it's something that the board should consider. I would be for voting to put it on the ballot. I think people in Raleigh, it's hard for them to realize, people in Raleigh and Cary, that there are a lot of places, especially in eastern Wake County, that don't have transit at all. So, it's very difficult for those people to get to their jobs if it's not in the same direct area where they live.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. West. The population of Raleigh and Wake towns is growing fast, placing increased pressure on our drinking water supply. What should we be doing to ensure adequate water supplies? Experts have projected our region could be the first on the east coast to run out of water. The county has supported spending at least 250 million to dam the Little River Reservoir. Do you support this project and why or why not?
Yes, water supply is a very, very important resource. That includes gray water and drinking water. And the Little River Reservoir, I've had the chance to go out with Mayor Frank Eagles to take... of Roseville, to take a look at that. And the county has purchased that particular property. It's in the process of looking at permits, working with the city of Raleigh. And water is just such a critical factor in terms of a city growing. And I think that along with some of the other strategies with the falls and looking at pollution and et cetera, protecting our environment, open space are very, very important to our future growth.
Thank you.
We obviously need more water and as our population increases, we're going to need yet more water. I personally am one of those people that really think we have an endless water supply in the Atlantic Ocean that we're not utilizing. And I know that some of you are laughing because you know that we had a water plant down in Wrightsville Beach several years ago that they discontinued using because they figured that it was not suitable for drinking water. Well, you could drink it. It did taste pretty horrible. But the bottom line is we're not going to ever, ever be able to... we don't have another river. There's no other river to go to. Little River was the last. And if you've been down looking at the Little River, it's really pretty spotty. But by the same token, I think that we have been working for years towards the end of being able to fund that and to be able to license it. So, it would be my hope that somehow that the state of North Carolina is going to come through and be able to help us with this.
We're passing microphones all around, so... I would just go ahead and send that one back to Caroline. I don't think the project is a bad idea at all. We do have to use our resources as wisely as we can. I would also like to work with builders and contractors to look at ways of possibly building new gray water systems as well as even dehumidifier systems that can capture the moisture in the air and even put it into the gray water filtration system. It's really not that expensive to do. We can become self-sufficient, but we have to innovate people to do so. I would encourage the builders and contractors to take this task up on their own as opposed to saying, hey, we're government. You should do this. But it may come to that one day. We'll never know. But the way the Little River system looks, I think it's a positive benefit for our county.
Water is precious and it's limited. And again, with our heavy growth, it's something that we need to take very seriously. I agree with Paul about what they're... we need to look into expanding the gray water reuse for our lawns that part of Raleigh's doing and Cary is doing. We need to make sure that we're conserving the water that we have and using best practices in the use of the water that we actually already have. Little River, even though it's not... looks like it's not going to be the best reservoir, it is something we probably need to go forward with and the county needs to take a leadership role in working with the state and the municipalities to find these water resources because the people are going to continue to come. So, we need to take this very seriously.
Okay. I think we will find some sensible solution to the future water needs of this county. First of all, we don't have a water shortage issue. What we have is a water storage issue. This part of the country gets a great deal of rain. I lived many years in California and California has a water shortage problem, but they also have a great deal of storage facilities out there as well. So, Little River looks like it may be a possibility to increase the storage. I've looked at a lot of reports that have been commissioned to look at the future water needs of Wake County. And the thing that was disappointing in reading all those reports is how many options were looked at as being not feasible. And I would like to challenge some of that feasibility and take a look at maybe finding other places and other ways of storing water.
Thank you. Our next question would be with Ms. Ward. Given that Wake County is among the fastest-growing counties in the nation, what is your vision about how we should develop and plan for growth? How would you reconcile the need for job growth and housing development with the need to protect our watersheds, farms, and green spaces?
Well, obviously, that's a big question because... but I do truly think that at the moment that we have put some measures in place over the last few years that we voted on. We have ordinances and we have laws and so forth. But by the same token, we are really, really working with the home builders. We're working with the realtors. I went out to one of their meetings at their building in Cary the other day and they truly do want to help us do this. And so, I think that the cooperation is there. It's just a matter of being able to perhaps use it more often than we have in the past. We do have some wonderful opportunities to look forward to in the future with our additional employment. We have wonderful, wonderful people coming in and large numbers of people that are being hired. And I truly do believe that if we continue to work and work hard, that we're going to be able to have a clean city, a clean city with transit and a city that we can... and a town, a county we can be proud of.
That's a long question for a one-minute answer. But let me... if I can do the first part as quickly as I can, my vision for Wake County is as a full-service county. And what that means is not just somebody who focuses on tech sector or finance sector. You know, we need education in trades. We need education everywhere we can get it. And that means that we have to have car mechanics. We have to have gardeners. We have to have everybody. Somebody told me the other day, well, education, education, education. It's also a point of what are we educating people to do? And as I told somebody the other day, my little brother who's passed on now, he was not the most scholastic individual in the world, but he was a genius with his hands. I think we need to focus on trades now. I know I've got 15 seconds. To go back to the other parts of the question, how do I see Wake County? I've seen it as an oasis in the desert. We have kept it clean and pristine. We've done a lot to welcome people here in this area and I hope we continue to do the same things that we've been doing in a fiscally responsible way.
Thank you. And Mr. Fitz, you have the last question. I'm sorry. I keep forgetting that Ms. Sullivan on the end.
That's all right. It's because I'm in this line of vision. I agree with Betty Lou. I think there's a... we're at the point where we can work with the stakeholders in development, the home builders, the realtors, the county, the municipalities. And the county can take the lead on making sure that the development is stable in the sort of development that we all need. And regarding the second part of the question, we need to make sure that as we grow, we're keeping the things that made us such a desirable place viable. Things like the public schools, the community colleges, and our quality of life, our greenways, our parks, the fun things, the libraries, the great things that make Wake County such a fantastic place to live. I think it's very important that we continue to remember that people moved here for certain reasons and we don't want to destroy those things that made it such a desirable community in the first place.
I'm not sure I heard the question in total, but I'll go ahead and answer as best I can anyway. The economy and jobs and the investment in Wake County is a continuing effort that Wake County continues to do by working with Wake Tech Community College, the Wake Economic Development Program, North Carolina State University, and the existing businesses within Wake County to create jobs. This is a terrific place to live. It's a place that a lot of companies come to take a look at as a place to bring their businesses to, and we need to continue to encourage them to do that. As far as the development of the land that's in Wake County, there's a tremendous amount of farmland in some Wake County. We need to preserve that. We also need to preserve the suburban lifestyle that attracts so many people to our county. That's that suburban lifestyle that brings people here and with them, it brings economic opportunity.
I don't personally see the two issues as being mutually exclusive, the area of economic development, jobs, housing, and protecting the environment. They are highly interrelated and I'm just of the opinion that we have to do a good job of trying to do both. I think we can over-regulate in some cases. You look now at the economy and people that are truly hurting, the jobs that are needed. And I think the schism that we often have between people, if we could bring it together, stakeholders, to create a shared vision, that that would happen. I remember when on the Raleigh City Council, we established a Board of Housing Task Force. I particularly went out and got builders, some from Chapel Hill, who were doing some very innovative things. We came together, we came up with a very, very good plan.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're back on task now. Mr. Fitz? Okay. Last question.
We're trying to keep up.
Given the economy and the growing elderly population, the need for affordable housing is increasing in Wake County. Do you have specific recommendations for improving the supply of affordable housing such as inclusionary zoning or other measures to guarantee mixed-income areas throughout the county? Would you support legislation for inclusionary housing?
As a mortgage lender, I deal with affordable housing issues every day. It's really more of a credit-driven issue than anything else. Something I spend a lot of my personal time with my clients and people who cannot at this moment qualify, I spend a lot of time with them to credit-qualify them or get their credit cleaned up so they can buy a house. I truly feel that it's a marketplace issue more than a governmental issue. There are so many foreclosure homes that are available right now to people that are cheap. And I say cheap, I mean, they have plenty of equity in them and you can pick them up for $30,000, $40,000. They're out there. It's more along the lines of how we can drive the market more than we can legislate it. There are houses available in every city. It's just a matter of how we can help those people qualify to buy those homes that are currently available.
I think the county needs to work with all of the other stakeholders, the cities, the federal government, and the public-private partnerships to work together to try to bring affordable housing. They've done some great things downtown with mixed-use projects and I think that's the direction we need to go in. We need to maximize what's out there to bring more affordable housing to the county.
Well, first, I guess we have to recognize that housing in Wake County is more affordable now than it has been in a long, long time. And that's unfortunate for a lot of people, but fortunate for others that are first-time home buyers and looking for a home to buy. Now's a great time to do that. Wake County has a lot of builders, fewer now than they did before, but still builders that are out there that want to build houses. That's what they want to do. So, I'm a free-market kind of an individual. If there's a need for low-income housing, then I'm sure there's builders out there that'll build it.
Right at this particular point, based on my study and my analysis, I would not
support mandatory inclusionary zoning. Some volunteer method, as I said, I worked very close with the City of Raleigh Affordable Housing Task Force, and I've looked at Metamart and over in Chapel Hill, Durham, Trust and all these kinds of things, probably worked as hard as anyone trying to look at incentives and opportunities for affordable housing, work with the Raleigh Housing Authority, the county housing authority. We're right now sitting in a redevelopment area where there's a lot of opportunities for affordable housing. I think that we can achieve that without a required mandated inclusionary-type zoning approach by bringing the builders and other stakeholders together. And I think everybody has a goal to make sure that we provide both affordable and market rate housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I sat here as that question was asked and thought about the number of builders who are in Wake County and in surrounding towns that do actually go after these affordable houses because they can borrow money at a better rate than the others when they want to borrow the money to be able to move ahead. We do have a lot of affordable housing. Problem is, we just need a lot more. And as was pointed out by my person to my left here, he... the truth of the matter is the credit is the big deal and that unfortunately happens over a period of time and that makes a really big difference. But it would be my hope that as we move along through all these federal, state, local programs, that we'll be able to help more people as they come along and need our help.
Thank you. And then we will open that question up to the audience.
Good afternoon, candidates. Lyndy Brown, former Wake County Commissioner. It's good seeing you as always. I have two questions, very simple, not intimidating, but I will... I'm specifically wanting to know... first question, as a county commissioner, what county programs would you advocate for the 47% county cities?
The 47%?
The 47%. Emphasis is those population of individuals who may be in need of Wake County services. How would you advocate and what programs would you advocate for?
And please don't get me wrong... And please don't get me wrong when I ask this question, but everybody has different needs. It's really a matter of addressing each individual's needs. Explain from my industry, when I see a client, I look at their credit, I look at their income, I see what they can and can't do. It's like going to a doctor, and me and you could both go to the same doctor, we're both going to be, you know, diagnosed with two different issues. If there was something a little more specific, we could probably hit on...
More specific, you identify what county?
So we identify the issue, and that's the issue that we're going for.
If you're going to be a county commissioner, you need to know the programs that the counties serve for all the citizens.
Absolutely, but the 47% is a varied of many, many people, and they all have different individual issues that they need to have addressed. I guess if we're going to talk, for me, let's just say the transit issue. If it were me, I wouldn't do the current plan as it is. I would look at possible ways of maybe decommissioning county vehicles to allow people to have those as a means of transportation. It would be a whole lot cheaper than doing a bond referendum. I mean, that's just one of several things.
Okay.
Aside from the schools and the transit, the other programs, the one that would be the nearest and dearest to my heart are the programs for mental health and for children and adults with disabilities. A lot of my time over the past 10 years has been advocating for children's and families, the children and families of kids with special needs and for mental health. It's an incredibly large problem in our county. We've redone how we're going to deliver all of these services merging with Durham, and I think it's an incredibly important thing. Mental health, it's not only hard on the individual who's having the mental health problems, it can tear apart a family. And families, when they get, a child who's getting diagnosed with a disability, it also is a life-changing event for them. The county can do miraculous things for those children and those families, I know, and I'd be excited to help the mental health and developmental disability population.
Okay, Ms. Cook.
Well, first of all, as a community, we function as 100% of the people, not 47% of the people. There are people in our community that do have special needs, and those of us that are more fortunate than others will certainly lend helping hands to those people, and through the county government, we do that as well. I think the most important thing for everybody who's reliant upon the county and the services that it provides is that the county provide a fiscally sound government, that they have the funds available to provide the services that the citizens depend upon, and that's what I'm going to focus on.
Lyndy, I do think that's a good question. I'm the Human Services Liaison member. You were on the Human Services Board, and every time I go out there, I see this sea of people, a pure sea of people, standing in line at 7:30 in the morning, desperate. I look in their eyes, and I know that, how they are struggling, and it's a hard thing with me. And we were interviewing this morning for some additional members, and the question that I asked related to, what is your belief about people? Do you believe that everyone would like to be self-sufficient, given the right set of circumstances, or do you believe that people are just dependent? 47% is a good number. Somebody apparently does believe that 47% might not be too important in that process. But the bottom line here is, we've got a middle-class express program, we're moving people from low income to middle class, teach them skills and these kinds of things. These are the kinds of things we need to be focusing on.
Thank you.
As an advocate for children with disabilities for all my adult life, and particularly for those people who have a mental illness, I am very sensitive to the population that we have dealt with. And as we built Wake Brook a couple of years ago and opened it, which is a wonderful new mental health facility, which you certainly are aware of, I think that we've done a good job there, we just haven't done enough because we still have beds yet to open, and I think that we've been pushed by the mental health community to do that, and I hope that we'll have those open very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. My second question, and this is real simple. Please explain the role and the responsibility of the school board and the county commissioner, and how would you maintain a positive working relationship?
We'll start with Ms. Sullivan, that question.
So the first part was, how do I explain them?
Explain the roles of both, the school board and the county commissioner.
I think the county commission is the banker, sort of. The school board sets the policy, there's a separate elected board, and the Board of Commissioners is the banker. North Carolina is different than most states where school boards do not have funding authority. So it puts us in a different sort of position. The county commission isn't in the position to do things like assignment plans and make these sort of personnel decisions that are in the school board's purview. I do, however, think things have gotten rather toxic and unproductive, and there are 150,000 children that we're talking about, and it's not just the lives of the children, it's the economic health of this community. The public schools have been entwined with the health and the vibrancy and the economic success of our communities, and I think we need to be very careful when we're talking about public schools.
Well, first of all, let me say, our schools are good schools, and our teachers and principals are good people, and they want to provide the best education to our children. The parents remain skeptical of the leadership of the school system, and as they should, because we have seen way too much partisanship creep into the politics of schools, and that must end. We need responsible managers of our schools, not politicians that seek to use the school system as a means of social ends or a springboard to hire political office. We need a school system that provides all of our children with the knowledge that they need to enter into the 21st century with the opportunity to excel in a globally competitive environment. That's a tough job, but I think the people that are participating in the school system are up to it. Wake County's continued to make its investment into the school system, and if I'm elected, we will continue to do so.
I think someone said power corrupts, absolute power corrupts absolutely. I think one of the problems that we have is somewhat focuses on power. Who's going to be in control of what? Turf? And we certainly need to try to develop some trust through communication and dialogue. This is a process we started. We met with the school board on a number of situations and issues and cases. The leadership of both boards have been meeting, but I think the bottom line here is that we do have very clear and initiated roles, and as long as those roles are set up by the statute, we should follow them and just simply that way.
One thing we always need to keep in mind is the fact that the school board are also elected officials, elected by the people of the county, and sometimes when things get out of hand, we forget that. I don't mean me personally or anybody else on my board, it's just that it does happen that way. But by the same token, I think that working together is the best thing going. We haven't had too many meetings during this past year, have we, James, with the school board? I don't really know what's going on, and we had one scheduled for next week that I understand's been called off, but by the same token, I do believe that we need to work very closely with the school board, find out what they need, find out what they want, and try to proceed accordingly.
Thank you. Ms. Fitz?
Last week at our meeting, our debate, Dr. West said that one of the problems with Wake County is that there's too much partisan politics, and I agreed with him because, and I even stated, and they'll back me on this, that I could work with anybody here on this panel because I think we're all pretty agreeable. And trust is usually the biggest key. You have to have trust. I don't exactly trust Kevin Hill after what happened yesterday or on Tuesday because he campaigned and said that Tony Tater got an A minus in his book for what he was doing with the county school system. How does somebody go from an A minus to an F in 10 months? I just don't know. I would like to trust every single individual on the school board, but now at this point, that trust has to be earned, and they're not exactly proving it at this moment.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. My name is Neelish Surti from Garner. We've talked a lot about schools, and we've talked a lot about transit. I've got a multiple-choice question here. If you were elected, what would be your priority as a county commissioner? Transit referendum, a school bond referendum, both, or neither?
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Cook.
I answered this question the other day. My priority if elected as county commissioner is the Board of Commissioners, and my priority would be to work with the commissioners in coming up with common sense solutions to the problems of Wake County. And that can be school, it can be water, it can be transportation, it can be lots of different things, but what I'm willing to offer the voters of Wake County is my years of experience in business. In business, you look at the return on investment, the bottom line, and that sort of thing, and I think county government's the same way. You've got to look at what you're responsible to the citizens to provide, and then do it.
Answer was neither?
No, the answer's both, and anything and everything that pops up.
Well, I'm going to attempt to answer your question. It would be a strategic investment in our schools, and I think based on the growth of this particular area, the quality of life, and for us to be competitive, we do need improved transit.
Hey, hey to that. Well, I do, I really do feel strongly about the transit, but I also feel strongly about the schools, and I think it is important that we attempt, certainly attempt really hard, to maintain a relationship with the school board, whatever, and be able to move ahead because the kids are the ones that are dependent on us, and the transit is important.
I'm going to collect both microphones now. They keep coming this way. I believe if I, obviously if it's a choice of any of them, it would probably be a school bond referendum. The transit referendum, again, is still too costly for what it's going to produce. It has to be taken back to the drawing board. You have to look at what we do almost as a marriage, and really and truly, it's two parties, you know, a husband and a wife, Democrat, Republican, however you want to say it. And in a marriage, just like anything else, there's going to have to be compromise. If one side says, no, we have to have all of this, the other side says, no, you're not going to get all of that, then nothing's going to get accomplished. I truly believe that that transit package has to be taken back to the drawing board, otherwise it'll never be touched. My number-one issue as a person who would be elected is business recruitment to this area. I'm strongly in a zone right now that I think as an elected official, we should be actively recruiting businesses to come to our area. We have so much to offer other businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan? Didn't forget you this time.
I think they're linked, and I think when you talk about the economic health of the county and the way our county's going to look in the future, I think you sort of have to look at both. I've talked to some CEOs who said they didn't choose places like Atlanta because it was too congested, and we're going to reach the point where it's really going to affect our ability, the transit issue is going to affect our ability to recruit jobs. And then schools, you ask people why they moved here, and if you ask a big room, most of them are going to tell you one of the reasons why they came here is the strong public schools, and we let them fail at our own peril. So I think it is both. I think the transit plan is getting redone. I mean, the commissioners have already brought it back to the drawing board, so hopefully the community can get together, work out the things that people don't like, hold the public hearings, and move on that, too.
I just returned to Wake County Schools after spending two years working in Dare County Schools on the Outer Banks. Dare County School Board and their county commissioners have worked together to raise additional revenue for their school system through the use of a real estate tax that apparently their state enabling legislation, but each county has to decide whether they want to add this additional tax to the sale of a home, the taxes paid by the seller of a home. You may be more familiar with it, Mr. Fritz, than I. My question would be, would you favor instituting such a tax in Wake County to generate additional income, even if builders and developers are opposed to it? And as a tangent to that question, would you favor using some of those monies to fund a vocational school as is proposed for Southeast Raleigh?
Thank you, and we'll start with Mr. West. I think you're next.
I'm a very strong advocate of the CTE Career Technical Education Vocational School. I have some local community leaders that have met with the various players regarding that. It's something that's been a strong thrust, especially in Southeast Raleigh, in terms of trying to provide the kind of skills for people who are under-skilled and people who are unemployed. I'm really not familiar with this particular tax. I guess I would say if it affected affordable housing in any way, my answer would be no.
Several years ago, this particular tax was discussed among the members of our board, and the home builders had a fit, had an absolute fit. I mean, I thought my phone was going to ring off the hook because actually they were upset, angry, and didn't want to talk about it. We backed off at that point. Maybe we should have gone on, I'm not sure. But I think if indeed that we did move in that direction, I truly believe that we need to bring the whole community together to be able to help us make that decision.
Before we look at a different tax as opposed to a bond referendum or another tax or increase in property tax, I've said this before and I'll continue to say it, again, we have to think outside the box sometimes. GlaxoSmithKline bought Southern Durham High School back in 1990. They paid the county of Durham a large sum of money, and they built them a free school. There are plenty of ways that we can engage in real estate speculations for ourselves to put money back into the school budget. Why aren't we looking at converting all the school buses to natural gas school buses to save money on fuel costs? You can go point by point by point on every point of savings and put that money back into the education funding. Thinking outside the box sometimes is just a little bit better than just a tax increase, though.
And I think it worked great for Dare because Dare sold a lot of vacation property, and since, I don't know how many people have vacation homes in Wake County, I'm sure some people do, but I feel that we're primarily residential. So I'm not sure how well that would work with us, and right now, during, while the home market is still depressed, I'm not sure it would work. If it's something that we wanted to look forward to in the future, I agree with Betty Lou, you really have to sit down with the home builders and talk about the best way to look at anything like that. And talking about the vocational school, as James had mentioned, I'm a very strong proponent with moving forward with that, too. I think there are a lot of people that would benefit from a vocational school all the way through high school. I think there are a lot of careers that people can choose that would be well-served by a vocational high school.
Well, looking at Dare County's debt ratio, I can understand why they need to raise taxes. But here in Wake County, we need to sell more homes. We need, our property tax is what is the main revenue generator for Wake County, and if we want to increase the revenue so we can do more spending for the needs of the citizens of Wake County, then we need to sell some more homes, build some more homes, and sell some more homes, and adding a tax to do that is contrary to a good business practice.
I believe that a transit system is mandatory for Wake County. For every dollar we take out of oil and convert it to natural gas or even a transit system, then that means we don't need to fight these wars in other countries to keep the oil flowing. So here's my question. Would members or, I wanted to say candidates, for the Wake County Commission support a transit system by raising impact fees?
Start with Mr. Fitz. Yes?
Again, transit system is still a broad term, but if we're still talking about rail, light rail, commuter rail, I'm not, I'm a person who's not against helping people, and I like to help people as effectively and as efficiently as possible. There are failings in our current cab bus system... There are failings in our current cab bus system that nobody is looking at. The cab buses ride at 30% capacity right now. They cost a lot of money. We should be looking at smaller buses that run on natural gas, which, again, are cheaper, efficient ways of making people mobile. I don't know how many people know this, but, and Mr. Weeks will probably back me on this, but there is currently a partnership with the city of Raleigh and taxi cab drivers to pick people up from their homes and take them places for a subsidy. Again, there's all kinds of effective ways of transit, but any current plan that counts as light rail right now is far too expensive for what we need. The proposal for $60 million to transport 16,000 people on a daily, annual basis, those 16,000 people cost us $3,750 per person. That's still too much for a plan.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Bottom line, we do need a transit system. How we pay for it, that's going to be the challenge that we have. And I think what was proposed and put forth on a regional basis to Wake, Durham, and Orange County, as a region to develop a rail system that would, I don't think any of the rail systems around the country, the ones that I am aware of, the ones that I've written on, have actually been profitable. That's just a given. But by the same token, I'll give you a real quick example. I was in Portland, Oregon several years ago and rode the rail system out to the county manager's office to discuss something with them. We got there, I was riding with a city council member, because it was a Chamber of Commerce trip, and we got in and we said to the county manager, we do not know how to pay to ride on your rail system. We couldn't find a way to pay. And she said, that's not a problem. The fact that you rode was the positive thing, get people off the street.
Thank you.
I believe Larry asked about impact fees and supporting transit. I'm of the opinion that, right now, we don't need to single out any particular group or any particular type of fee. I think there are a lot of innovative ways we can come to the table. We already got a couple of strategies for doing that.
Well, I'm not against public transit at all. What I am against is light rail for the, a low-density population like Wake County. For light rail to be even anywhere near economically feasible, you need to have a high-density urban area to support it. And I'm sorry, Raleigh and Wake County doesn't fit into that. Let me give you a rule of thumb here. If there's enough demand along a corridor to operate buses every two minutes, then a light rail train would have lower operating costs than the buses. But no one in Wake County has ever seen a bus running along full of people every two minutes. You just don't see that. What we see is, we see $350,000 buses running along with three or four people on it. The bus system can be and should be improved, and I've got a lot of good ideas on how to do that. But light rail is not a component for Wake County.
And I think regarding the revenue structure, the states told us what they're going to legislatively allow the county to pull the trigger on financially, and that's a half-cent sales tax. The state has to give, it's from my understanding, that the state has to give you authority to levy impact fees, and they have to be for certain things. And transit, I do not believe is one of the things they said you could do. The state hasn't given us the authority to do that. And regarding the national gas, there are a lot of cities that are moving to their buses getting run by a portion or all natural gas. So I think that's something we need to look into, too.
Thank you. Okay, and then we would give each candidate a two-minute closing. I think we would work in reverse order, and Mr. Cook, I think you were the last one when we started, gave you an opening, so we'll start with you with the closing.
Okay, very good, thank you. And thanks to everyone for showing up this evening. We've heard from many candidates this evening that know what county government is and how it operates. The question voters must now answer is, who offers the best experience to manage those operations going forward? And I offer 40 years of experience working with national governments and large corporations to bring business to our country. And I now offer those skills to the voters of Wake County to run the business of Wake County. We truly have a great place to live here in Wake County, and I will work hard to keep it that way. Growth in our county is inevitable, and we must plan accordingly. But as we plan, we must keep in mind what makes Wake County unique and different from the rest of our country. If we become just another boom, suburbia with the congestion, confusion, and problems of too many people, then we will have failed the people of Wake County. I will work to find sensible solutions to the problems we face with the growing population, not using ideological blueprints, but with common sense solutions that preserve the great suburban lifestyles we all enjoy and wish to continue. Wake County is a great place to live. Everybody here knows that, particularly the people sitting up here, and we all want to keep it that way. I will work hard to make it that way.
Thank you. Ms. Ward? We work in a reverse order from when y'all did your opening.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here tonight. Thank you all for coming, and I truly do believe that we do live in a wonderful county. Dale sort of summed it up very nicely when he talked about the many ways in which we can value our environment. A lot of people have worked hard over the years to provide this environment for us, not only people in government, but certainly just local citizens who have worked hard. I do believe that we have an opportunity for the future to be able to invest in all of the things that really count, all of the things that really make a difference. And I truly do believe that we will come out with a wonderful city, a wonderful county, and a place that we want to continue to grow and to have lots of family, lots of people around. So, thanks.
Ms. Fiss?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Martin Street Baptist Church for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you, League of Women Voters, and Wake Up Wake County for hosting the event. This is an esteemed panel, and I am privileged to know everybody on this panel. Everybody is a solid candidate, and we have two commissioners who are currently serving, and I respect them both. We have somewhat a little bit different visions on what we see for the fiscal side of what we think the future of Wake County should be. I am a person who wants to be a cheerleader for this great county that we live in. I want to tell other people about it so they can continue to come here and enjoy what we have. We've worked hard to keep it this way. We've worked hard to welcome people here. I want to see families come from other parts of the country so they can see what I've been privileged to see my entire life as a lifelong citizen here. Again, don't forget to go vote in November. It's important for all of us. Even though we have this event, we actually need your votes, one way or the other, to get us elected. And we hope that this has been informative, and we really appreciate and respect your time for being here tonight. Thank you all.
Mr. West?
Yes, thank you so very much. It's always good to get out and to talk and to listen. You are the key. In citizen politics, they say that the citizen should be on top and the expert on tap. That has been changed over the years, and I think has affected our democracy in a very, very negative way. We are now experiencing what I call a hierarchical democracy versus a knowledge democracy. We need to go back to a knowledge democracy. I was out in LA some years back, and someone was running for the LA Council. My daughter lives out there, and he was running on a platform of four Ps, party, politics, people, and problem solving. And he said that, he didn't put much emphasis on party and politics, local. He said, the key was to help people to solve problems. And often, what we focus on, not the things that should be the ends, but we focus on the means, party and politics. We need to get away from that. We need to focus on helping people to reach the American dream. I have worked extremely hard here, especially in Southeast Raleigh, with economic empowerment, and trying to get people to take control of their destiny. And there's a great spirit here, but there's just something here in some of these low-income and minority census tracts that's holding people back, and the opportunities are just not there, like the CTE school that we're talking about, the vocational school, we partnered with the community college. It is truly another opportunity to get people to the point that they feel good about themselves, they have the skill to participate in society. And I think my bottom line here is spirit. I think the best way sometimes to control people is to kill their spirit. And we need to do some things to uplift the spirit, Pastor Johnson. That's what my pastor is doing there. God bless you.
Thank you. And Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. And again, thanks to Martin Street and to the League of Women Voters and to Wake Up Wake County for having us here. I feel that if I'm elected, my job is going to be not only making this a great community, but making it a great community to live in. County government affects you every day. It's from the quality of schools and the number of kids in a class that your, the school that your child attends, to whether the library is open and it has books, and it's how you get to work every day on the weekday, to the things that you do on the weekend, the parks and the greenways and the things that you enjoy on the weekend. And it's how long EMS takes to get to your house if you're having an emergency, and it's how long it takes you to cast your vote. These are the integral things that make your quality of life better, and they're also the things that drive this economy forward and help us recruit jobs and businesses. In the past, our leaders have been able to make these decisions on a nonpartisan, non-ideological basis. I think we've reached the point where we need to stop worrying about ideology and political bickering and really start thinking about the things that are going to make this community a great one now and in the future. And that's the kind of leader I want to be making smart and prudent investments in our schools, in our economy, in our, in our community colleges, while keeping our AAA bond running. This is a very well-run county. We are one of five counties that have AAA, state, county, and largest municipality in the country. So we're not full of bad management from a financial standpoint here in the county. I want to continue in that vein, looking forward in this county to the things that we need to do to keep us growing, keep our children being able to achieve what they need to do and compete in the global economy.
Thank you, candidates. Also, I would like to say thank you to Reverend Johnson and Martin Street Church for allowing us to be here tonight for the forum. And most importantly, thank you, the audience, for being here tonight. So let's give our candidates a round of applause.
From September 27th, this has been a forum featuring the 2012 Candidates for Wake County Board of Commissioners, presented by Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters. To learn more about Wake Up Wake County, please visit wakeupwakecounty.org. To learn more about the Wake County League of Women Voters, please visit lvwake.org. Early voting for this year's election runs October 18th through November 3rd. Election Day is Tuesday, November 6th. To learn more about these and other North Carolinian candidates, please visit ncvotorguide.org.